All right, welcome everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And just to get things started, I want to just give a big shout out to the snow removal team for the city and DPW. Oh my gosh. We are so grateful. I've heard such great things, such appreciative things of their work over the last, what, three days? Something like that. It's been, they've been working to exhaustion, basically. And we're so grateful for their work. So, just want to say that first. First thing is to, other first thing, is to review and approve the agenda. And I don't think we have any changes to the agenda. Am I wrong about that to anybody's knowledge? I think it's as advertised. Okay, so we're going to consider the agenda approved without objection. So on to general business and appearances. So this is a time for any member of the public to address the council on some item that is otherwise not on our agenda. And if you have something to say, if you would say your name and where you live, and try to keep your comments to two minutes or less. And with Donna not here, I will keep track of time.
I'll take the first one. One of my rare appearances. Good evening to all. My name is Richard Shear from Loomis, near Main Street. And I just had a question about transportation policy, which is something that really isn't on the agenda.
Did you get it right on the microphone?
Sure. Is the mic on? Okay, good. And I'll speak a little louder, Jack, anyway. I'm here to speak to transportation policy, which isn't on the agenda, hasn't been on the agenda for a while. And basically, I'm not questioning the 40,000 that's embedded in the budgets at all. I'm not, that is in the budget. What I'd like is, I'd like better understanding, as Green Mountain Transit is about to release, Donna, I'm right, you're on the Transportation Committee, that Green Mountain Transit will make public soon, their planning that they've been working on for a long while.
That's correct, but they're also going to be making some reductions.
Ooh, okay. And I know there'll be a public meeting on that sometime in February, I believe. What I'm wondering is the process of the city's 40,000 on transportation. Whether this is a no-bid contract to Green Mountain Transit, or whether this is 40,000 that's going to be allocated for transporting people around our town. And basically, will that go out in the form of an RFP? And if Green Mountain Transit has the most effective way of doing it, certainly they would continue with it. But if there are other alternative models, that's the first part of the question. And the second is, how much connection the schools have had with the city council and their transportation planning? Since the schools are planning to allocate 120,000 for the transportation of 150 students. So if I could just have a couple of minutes on when the city is planning to discuss unified transportation. Boy, that was a lot in two minutes.
Yeah, fair enough. Oh, don't forget to say your name and where you're from.
I did.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I totally missed it. I think I was getting my phone. That's what happened. No, that's great.
You heard me, didn't you?
Yeah, no worries. Great question. I think that's something that we could absolutely take up at a future meeting. And I think it's probably worth talking about. So let's, I can't tell you exactly when that would be right now, but let's be in touch about when we might have a more robust conversation about that. Yes?
I would just like to make sure you realize that 40,000 doesn't pay for it all. That's a subsidy to state and federal dollars.
Absolutely. And I'd like to know where the state is involved in this one. So Donna, would you be the point person on council on that issue?
Sure.
Notice how I delegate Donna into this? That's all I have to say. Thank you so very much. I'll get home on a rainy night.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Dan Dickerson, Montpelier resident. This relates to bike path access. I live on Charles Street, which I don't know if anybody's familiar, but it basically flows from sort of the college area down to Berry. I often find myself walking down to access the bike path, so I cut through that parking lot where the new apartment is, and access across the railroad tracks where I go to the co-op. And this sort of stems from me walking down a few days ago after the big snowstorm. So obviously, this is sort of a one-off, well, not a one-off occurrence, but a rare occurrence. And I found a giant mountain of snow blocking the path, or the desire line, as you would call it, to the bike path and to the co-op. And I guess I just wanted to suggest or wonder if there's a way that the city might, because there are a lot of people that actually walk down Charles and access the bike path and the co-op through that little corridor. And I'm wondering if there's a way for the city to potentially negotiate with the railroad and maybe the property owner to get like a formal pathway, as opposed to this sort of informal dirt track that currently flows there. I think there's enough traffic to warrant it. And I think, given that the bike path is going to be extended much further out, I think there might be a much greater desire of people to walk down Charles or come from Berry and access the bike path through that means. So I, just as a suggestion, it would be nice to have a formal pathway to access the path and the co-op. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great idea. We can certainly talk more about that.
Ashley, will the council bring up businesses that aren't on the agenda?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So I had sent an email earlier, but I've been following what the state is doing in terms of federal workers who are out of work and not getting paid. And I don't know what authority the city has or anything like that, but I know that there are, I think there's about 1,500 federal employees that live in Vermont, 1,600 maybe. And I want to make sure that it's something that's on our radar. Tax bills are coming due, you know, any of those things. We have no idea when the federal government is going to reopen. And our president just approximately eight minutes ago indicated that grocery stores will just give you credit to buy food, sort of whenever you want it. So that's not a practical reality for a lot of folks who are living paycheck to, like, a few days before next paycheck. And so I want the city to sort of start thinking about ways that we can be a little bit flexible on things that we wouldn't ordinarily be, but I think it's sort of extraordinary circumstances. And I'm certainly interested in that. Do you want to follow up with thinking about options?
So I'd just add, Ashley had asked in email about this, and I'm so excited to get back to you.
No, it's fine.
We've been trying to figure out what the legal options are.
You have a life bill? You do other things?
Nope. You say jump, I say high. No, so we're trying to find out what our legal choices are. I mean, I think obviously it would be the question of whether we could waive interest and penalties on late taxes, those kind of things. So I don't know what flexibility we have in the law.
Thanks for putting it on the radar. Anyone else? Donna?
There seems to be a strong echo. I don't know if I'm the only one who hears it.
There is.
Is there anything that can be done about it?
Reverb.
Are we that lit already?
I thought it was just my ears.
I guess I don't mind it because it tells me that you all can hear, which I like knowing.
You just won't touch my things.
Yeah, all right, there you go. Yeah, fair enough. Whatever works. Okay, anyone else? Okay. All right, so on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have some appointments to make. There are a number of appointments where there was one person applying for one position or two people applying for three positions, you know, something where, something like that. So we could just make all those appointments together at first, or we can hear from everybody and then go into executive session and then come back and announce them all. What's your preference?
Let's do the second one.
Okay, so we'll hear from everybody, go into executive session, and then come back and make all the appointments. Okay, great. So there are appointments to be made to the Social and Economic Justice Committee, Investment Committee Tree Board, and Solid Waste Management Committee. So I'm not, we don't necessarily go in order unless, well, let's go in order. How about that? Structure is good. I'm trying to be more structured here. Okay, so let's start with, if there's anyone here from the Social and Economic Justice or applying to that committee, if you would come on up and introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in that committee.
Hi, I'm Shayna Casper on 21 Kent Street. I just moved there last year. And I think I'm mostly interested just to get to know more about what's happening in Montpelier and to learn more about how we can make it a more inclusive place, like, a lot more in my mind, that's for sure, but.
Okay.
Great.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I think Janelle Perry sent us an email saying that she would not be able to be here. The Investment Committee, we had Lou Cesari apply, but he also sent us an email saying that he would not be here. And for the Tree Board appointment, is James Finley Sheris here? No? And for the Solid Waste Management Committee, I know that there are a number of people interested. And if you would introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in this committee.
Hello, I'm Donna Barlow Casey.
Pull that down to your mouth.
All right, thank you. I'm Donna, is this better? I'm Donna Barlow Casey. I have spent a fair amount of time in public service over three decades. I have not worked in solid waste directly in about six years, but I originally moved here in 1995 to be the Executive Director of the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District. I authored the first Zero Waste Plan East of the Mississippi for Sustainable Materials Management, advocated for the state's universal recycling law, am an avid composter, remain a consultant on a national level to EgoCycle out of Boulder, Colorado, on sustainable materials management. And I find myself as the current Executive Director for the Natural Resources Board Act 250, which, for the first time in my life, I don't have to work night meetings. I'm going day long. So I have this opportunity to take and throw my hat in the ring to do something I'm passionate about for the city of Montpelier. I'm no longer a resident, but I spent over 20 years living here. I have worked on an interim basis for the city of Montpelier a few years ago. I just love the city as our capital city and would feel very privileged if you would consider my candidacy for the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Chaney. I represent Montpelier on the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District Board. It's an elected position, this body elected me. Beyond that, I am incredibly passionate about garbage, as some of you know. I know a lot about what happens to garbage and recycling and compost in central Vermont. I'm a 16-year resident and very committed to making sure that our environment and our community is healthy and that our waste is disposed of properly.
Thank you.
I'm Kurt Erickson of Vine Street. I am the General Manager of Vermont Compost Company. I also do work with the Food Cycle Coalition, which is associated with Vermont Farm-to-Plate, also a member of the Composting Association of Vermont. I'm a formal environmental regulator with the U.S. Coast Guard. I've been here in Montpelier for two years now, and just as I, you know, I'm starting to think about, you know, starting a family and buying a house, I just want to ensure that we're managing these materials in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a backup of Shayna Casper, Kent Street. I work with Toxic Action Center. We work side by side with community groups that are fighting pollution threats in their neighborhoods. And we work with a number of different community groups around New England that are fighting landfills and incinerators in their communities. And so every day, I see kind of the, how this, how our waste system, you know, harms those who are facing the brunt of it. And so as part of our work, we're also moving towards zero waste, universal recycling. And so I've just been part of a lot of these conversations at the state level and then been helping community groups at the local level. And so I really, I'm really excited to see if I can help my own community move towards universal recycling and zero waste, to move away from our polluting landfills. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that is everyone. Were there any questions for anybody? Okay, so do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I would move that we go into executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313, four, some 31 blank, to discuss the appointments of people to city commissions.
Great. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will be right back. Okay, do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Oh, did anybody second that?
I tried to, but you were too quick.
Oh, okay, well, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Right, okay.
Fine oil machine.
Exactly.
Now I have a motion.
Yep, great.
I move that we appoint James Finley Sheris to the Tree Board, Lou Chichere to the Investment Committee, Shayna Casper and Janelle Perry to the Social Justice Committee, and Ellen Chaney to the Solid Waste Management Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I just want to make a note about the Solid Waste Committee. I am very likely to be the one that's going to be convening that group. And I, to all of you who applied, I want you all there. It is a public meeting, and we appointed one person because this is jointly held with Berry, and they appointed one person, so we felt there needed to be some equity there. But I want your brains there. So I have your email addresses, and I'll let you all know when that's happening. Okay, great, thank you. All right. So there is a proposal regarding the layout of the farmer's market for the summer. Is there somebody coming to talk to us about that?
I think they're on the way.
Okay, fantastic. We can pull more over. Would you mind just going around and introducing yourselves?
Sure. I'm Hannah Blackmer. I am the new president for the farmer's market.
You'll need the mics distributed on the table. Little one from the table.
Okay. Hannah Blackmer, President for the farmer's market.
Amy McCullough, Montpelier resident and Community Board Member on the farmer's market board.
I'm Jess Turner. I own Capital Kitchen on State Street.
My name's Eric Vigglestone. I'm owner of Capital Stationers on Main.
Bob Watson, Capital Grounds.
I'm Karen Wiseman. I'm the former president of the farmer's market, and I am the liaison to the board for the market.
And I'm Dan Grober, Executive Director of Montpelier Alive.
Well, welcome.
I think I'll go ahead and present. So we're here asking for the council to allow us to move on to Stage Street and the Heeny Lot for the duration of the outdoor 2019 farmer's market. Last year, we had some challenges, and we sort of looked at them as opportunities. And we're actually pretty grateful for what happened because we think out the other end here, you can see everybody's at the table. And we're really grateful for that. And I think that through all of our coordination and our discussions, that we came up with a layout that's going to really work for everybody and work for our customers and the town and the city. So we stepped back last year, and we worked with the DBA and Montpelier Alive and the city, and we came up with a better layout. The objective of, objectives of our layout, first and foremost, need to make sure we have a safe loading and unloading for the farmers. We need an open and flowing layout that really is a customer-centric experience. We need to maximize the vendors that we can have at our farmer's market for our financial And we also really want to integrate with all of the businesses and all of the organizations that make Montpelier what it can be. You know, we'll put this right out on the table, at this point in time, we really have no place to go. We did work with state officials and different organizations to assess the possibility of moving to the State House lawn, which seems to be much more of a challenge than we thought. So we've got a layout that we feel like is agreeable to everyone. And really, the objective is to make Saturday mornings a destination in Montpelier for all the community members and surrounding community members. Our current open issues are additional trash removal on Saturday mornings, which we've worked with the city, and most of these are all going to be addressed already. Barriers, last year, we needed to purchase some pretty expensive barriers to shut down the street, and that was a bit of a challenge for us. We'll be using our trucks, and that will also provide extra safety so that nothing like this happened in other places may happen here. Bathrooms are still an open issue. We've heard pretty clearly from the businesses that it's something we need to address. We have some ideas, and we're still working with Sue and the city, and we're pretty confident that we can solve those, but that is definitely a concern for all of us. Parking, everybody has always concerned about parking. This first year, we're going to all work together with a lot of advertising and pointing people to different places that they can park in the city. In future years, we're going to look towards the city council to potentially allow free parking in the new parking garage for Saturday mornings. We would ask that there are no permitted vendors allowed between Main Street and Elm Street during farmer's market times. And we also are still looking for a location for our trailer and some of other things. That's one of the unresolved issues, but there are some ideas, and we're working with the city. We've already got some regular meetings scheduled with Montpelier Alive and the Downtown Business Association to keep, not only just communication to work through any issues, but also to really create, create reasons for people to want, for people to come downtown and visit on Saturday mornings. Yeah, and I just want to hand it over to Hannah to say a couple lines of things.
So the farmer's market has a 40-year or so tradition downtown Montpelier, and it's such a rich agricultural community that we're supporting in a rich agricultural state. And we really look forward to working with Montpelier as a collective, to continue those traditions and to really support those traditions, and to continue to foster that leading edge that our state has in the agricultural community nationally, really. So we look at it as a really fantastic opportunity, and there are so many people to be involved with.
Great. Well, I'm so thrilled that you all come together and have a plan that you're supporting. It's wonderful. So if there's any questions from the council, now's the time, and we can keep going, yeah.
I just have one clarifying question. I noticed a note on here about the on-street vendors dropping from 30, to 35 from 50. That's not total vendors, right? The other, those other vendors will still be there, they're just on the, in the Heeny Lot area, right? So we're same-size market, just broken up into two areas?
Yeah, with the Heeny Lot, it actually, with the Heeny Lot, it actually allows us to grow in vendors, which is a requirement for our financial stability. We did drop down on Stage Street for a number of different reasons. It opens up the flow, it decongests some of the vendors right around where a fair amount of businesses are. And at the same time, it allows us also to keep the market continuous, which was a challenge with our members as well. So overall, we'll be able to grow the market upwards about 75 vendors, if we can.
Awesome.
Okay, so any other questions? So I think we need a motion regarding the layout. Is there, or is there any public comment?
I'll just say that I was one of the people who stood up here last spring and took issue with the layout at the time, but this layout, it seems so mindful of all the concerns that we, that we brought up. I mean, literally, every concern that we brought up seems to be addressed in the new layout. So I know, I'll speak for myself, and a lot of State Street businesses are really looking forward to this collaboration and moving forward in a really positive, exciting way with the market.
Donna?
And I'd like to echo that as well. It seemed like before it was not going anywhere. Give credit to the farmer's market for holding out and coming back and working together with the merchants, and I think it's a good situation. We do not want to lose the farmer's market in Montpelier. It's part of our identity, and we welcome, welcome them to State Street, and we definitely want to keep them here in town.
Great, super. Donna?
I just wanted to make a motion that we accept the layout as presented. Do I have to refer to this map?
As presented, I think, works, right?
Second.
For the farmer's market, do you need dates?
During the normal farmer's market season.
Okay.
Do we need to specifically mention closing State Street or do anything in our motion about that?
I would imagine we'd probably take that separately along with other street closure.
Yeah, we'd have to do official street closure.
We'll do that later.
So, but this was just about the layout, I think, so.
Imply that we will approve a street closure.
Yeah.
Much improved.
Keep it in mind.
We didn't tell you that part, right?
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I think that this is too small a town to have these two important segments of the community fighting with each other, and so I'm glad you were able to do this.
Great.
I just want to add on that comment. One thing that got me, I guess, excited in, I'm looking forward to this, is it's not, I don't think we're looking at putting the farmer's market on State Street. We're looking at redoing something different with State Street on Saturdays and incorporating the farmer's market with it. I think it has great potential.
Yes.
And, you know, we'll see what happens. We're all very excited for it.
Great. It's very exciting.
As a Montpelier resident, I'm really excited about it.
Okay, any further comments? Question? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great. Thank you for all of your hard work to make this happen. Thank you. Okay, and now we have a presentation from the Washington County State's Attorney, Roy Tebow, who I think I saw here.
I also should disclose, I am employed as a deputy state attorney in the Washington County State's Attorney's Office, so I'm not going to ask any questions or anything like that. And I just want everybody who's watching to know that as well.
Great. Welcome.
You might just skip ahead, Ashlyn.
Oh, I think we had a staff meeting the other day.
All right, well, good evening, and thank you very much for taking time to have me here this evening. It's exciting to be in front of the city council, and the work you do here is really important because all work in government is important these days. So what I really wanted to highlight to you tonight are, what you're being handed out is actually a two-year operating plan for my office. It's not something that has been done in the past, and as many of you know, I walked into this job sort of unexpectedly, and the past year has been filling out a different term. So I won election in November, and I have a four-year term ahead.
Just pull this.
So, in any event, it's a, it's a great opportunity to have four years ahead to plan. The past year's been a lot of mending fences and resolving issues. Ashley, I'm sure has probably vented to you about that in private. But looking ahead, I think it's incredibly important that we recognize that Washington County, including Montpelier, has a lot of justices in the criminal challenge end. These justice challenges often overlap with things that were well-versed in economic insecurity, poverty, addiction. So rather than just sit back and respond and react to things, as we often do in the criminal justice system, I thought it was appropriate that my team and I get together and think about what we really want to do and what we want to accomplish and focus on in the next few years. I think it goes without saying that the drug epidemic in central Vermont, which also touches Montpelier to a large extent... Montpelier to a large extent, perhaps maybe not even as much as people recognize, but it is there. It's important to recognize that the drug epidemic is a priority. I can say unfortunately, within the last 30 days in Washington County, there have been four fatal overdose events. What's also troubling is that in three of those four cases, these are individuals who had already received and had been part of medically assisted treatment. What this means for us, again, a little off-script here, but I think it's important to note this, we cannot simply silo the public health response from the criminal justice response. Oftentimes, the criminal justice system becomes an opportunity of last resort to save somebody or put them on the right path. Internal in this document, I lay out some of our four prongs, but they really of what our lines of effort are, to do a better job of justice and public safety in central Vermont, and specifically Washington County. When we look at addiction, there's two important things to consider, its response. There's an enforcement end, and then there's a recovery end. Those two can work well together, and one of the key things that we would like to do from our standpoint of using the justice system is to reduce the overall demand for drugs in Washington County and central Vermont. That's really a lot easier said than actually done, as you can imagine. But a part of that is making sure that we strike when the iron is hot, that there's a rapid response when someone is dealing with addiction or crisis. That means robust utilization of the Tamarac program, which is a pre-trial diversion program that includes a contract for seeking substance abuse and some case management. And then when we get to more intense cases, utilizing the Washington County Adult Treatment Court. Another effort I'm excited to announce with you, and we're working on with the team, is extending that into the juvenile division as well, so that people who are qualified to be treated youthful offender, that is our 18 to 22-year-old cohort group, can access that service. Of course, in that setting confidential, as opposed to the adult court, which is held in an open session. All this being said, there's a lot of exciting things that we're working on. What I've handed you includes, the first slide is some trends. One thing I want to point out is that we had last year 351 more cases filed in adult criminal court than we did the year before. That's out of a little over, somewhere over 1,700 total. Percentage-wise, that's a pretty massive increase. That, to this point, has been buffered without any increase in staffing or resources in my office. It's nothing short of a Herculean effort of both our partners in law enforcement and the deputies there, that I think they've done well, and we've continued to meet the needs in the justice system. There are some alarming trends there. We have an increase in domestic violence offenses, we have a significant increase in violations of conditions of release, partially, likely partially attributed to some bail reform, where bail's being used less often, and we're relying on those conditions of release. I will note, I don't have specific stats from Montpelier, but I would say anecdotally, there was an increase in the number of VCRs that officers had to respond to and file, and Berry City was able to attribute most of their case increase to violations of conditions of release, while their felony and violent crime rate actually decreased. So there are some things to consider. We also dealt with as an office the increase of availability of youthful offender, which is a program that I'm proud to say our office is a statewide leader in. Out of, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 133 total filings in the state, 44 of those youthful offender petitions were in Washington County. Our office is supporting all but 11 of those dockets for treatment as youthful offender. That pertains to six individuals. You may ask, why is the state's attorney opposed to some youthful offender cases? Well, these are violent cases that affect people and have real victims. There are attempted murders, there are sexual assaults, some on campuses, some in schools, some in the community. And also, one case I'll highlight, which is a Montpelier case, there's a case that we have filed an objection to that involves the sale and distribution of heroin in Montpelier by an 18 to 22-year-old. My objection in that matter is premised on the fact that that is distribution that's occurring to youth in this community and youth in central Vermont. The response from treatment in juvenile division probably isn't appropriate for long-term supervision. So there, there's some legislative priorities in here mapped out, and one area I'm particularly concerned about is issues of violent crime or serious felony crime. At this point, I would not assess that the resources available through the youthful offender program are adequate to meet that, and that is a real public safety challenge for law enforcement and for my office. In some respects, I don't think, you know, not just that case, but in some ways, criminal justice reform is, in general, an incredibly important principle and a huge priority, not just for my office, but for the Attorney General's office and for many leaders statewide. But we always need to be cognizant of how those changes progress and whether the resources and supports, we assume that will be there for people in that process, are keeping pace, is a question that we must focus on. So that is really what I wanted to say, by way of introduction. I understand all of you have different priorities and questions, probably about your community in particular, or some of the things we're doing, and I'd definitely like to answer some questions or assist you in understanding what our office is doing.
Questions? I have a question. This crew will know that I have a particular love for data, and so is there a place where you all have data about Washington County available? Or is that the kind of thing that you would, that you would even want to publish?
So we do have some data available. It's principally things that we are either obligated to report to the Executive Director's office, or our reporting is part of grants. For example, we do maintain data on domestic violence trends, so that's domestic violence offenses, violation of abuse prevention orders, and violations of conditions of release in those dockets. What I can, I can't remember the number offhand today, what I can tell you is that in 2018, we exceeded our number of filings that we had in 2017 in mid-October, and ended probably about 20 to 30 cases above where we were the year before. Now that said, that is, the question always becomes, does more cases mean there's more crime? And the answer is always more complicated, because that can also be an indication of more reporting and more follow-through. There are times where law enforcement is called to a household, you'll see in reports or what's published in the newspaper, responded to a family fight, for example. Sometimes a family fight is a nice way of saying, this is a domestic where no one wanted to make a criminal complaint or report. That's not always the case. And also, follow-through in cases is important. The number of filings is somewhat insignificant when you look at, was there a successful outcome one way or the other?
Fair enough, other questions? All right. Forgive my ignorance here, I guess I do have one other question. Is it safe to assume that you are funded through the state?
We are state-funded, so we're, the state's attorney's office is a very odd duck when it comes to state entities or county entities. So county government doesn't really exist much beyond having Superior Court assigned to a county, a sheriff's office, and then a state's attorney's office. So employees in my office are not actually considered state employees. We are considered county or municipal employees and have somewhat different sets of rules that apply, different pay scale. One positive I can report on is we are, you'll note in there, there's a lineup of our future staffing. This past legislative session, three additional deputy state's attorney positions were authorized statewide. There have been a request for more, and a number of counties also experienced with Washington County this past year of significant increases in case filings and volume, Franklin County being one in particular. We were lucky to be the third and final office to obtain that help, and so we'll be very happy to greet a gentleman named Malachi, ran into our office in March of 2019. So that's great news for us in terms of that, but we are a county entity.
Okay.
The final thing I'll say as well, with the absence of county government, a lot of people look for leadership in the county. Montpelier is a very strong city. Berry City is also a very strong city with robust political discourse and a city council that's very active. That's a benefit for more populated towns, but as the chief law enforcement officer for the entire county, we have some communities that are really small and really far from law enforcement resources. One of the other areas that I hope to emphasize, and I'm happy that both the Berry Community Justice Center and Montpelier Community Justice Center do serve communities outside of their immediate area, and so we have countywide coverage of that service. But in the future, in the absence of a county administrator, it's incredibly important that we marshal our collective community resources to help people in need and assist in the justice system. So I applaud you for your work and your cognizance of both social justice and criminal justice.
Thank you. And Donna?
I just had a couple of questions. Thank you for the handout, given that you just got it. The way you have it laid out makes facts jump out at you, so I appreciate that. Did you want to ask about the cows on front?
Yes.
Is that to get our attention, or do you have cows in the office?
Wait, that's way better than a cat or a dog.
Well, they're all tagged.
I think we're going to have an office vote tomorrow.
So I reside in the wonderful town of Cabot, and those cows live up the road from me. They're very friendly cows, they are very photogenic cows, and I thought that it captures our kind of rural aesthetic, and certainly for someone not from here, when you think Vermont, you think maple syrup and cows.
Well, likewise, you have three words here: fair, transparent, and responsive. What are three ways that things could change in your office to make it more fair, more transparent, and more responsive?
So fairness is an important concept, and you will see in there, there's a number of values that I've put out, actually right after my appointment, I thought it was important to have sort of a turning of the page and a change in perspective of how we approach criminal justice problems. I think fairness implies a lot of things. We're looking ultimately at what's best for the community. It's not necessarily what in every case a victim wants, it's not necessarily always that, you know, an offender probably doesn't want to go to jail or do, you know, some of the things he asked them to do. What we're looking at is reducing the risk in the community and arriving at outcomes that make sense, and, you know, are hopefully pro-social and are changing behavior. Usually when we have people in the criminal justice system, they're at rock bottom. Nobody wants to be sitting there on arraignment day, nobody wants to be coming out of the back and handcuffed because of something they've done. That's an opportunity, though. It's an opportunity for some sort of positive change. We've seen people in the most dire straits of addiction really have an incredible recovery, be it through treatment court, or through probation, or just the fact that this is a wake-up call that gets them to go seek help, or that gets their family engaged and realize that this isn't just a problem that they can ignore at family dinner or at gatherings. So in that sense, fairness, fairness is an evolving concept, and it depends on what you're looking at and who you're dealing with. Fair means assessing facts and making sure that we, as prosecutors, don't just think about what is popular in the newspaper or what's popular in the community, it's about doing what's right, even when that right may be really difficult to do. In terms of transparency, you know, I try, in my sense, to be very open and communicative with community partners, stakeholders, and with constituents when they call in or are concerned. You know, Ashley can attest, there are times where people don't like what we're doing one way or the other, we get yelled at, or, you know, people, other times people come up to us and are very happy about something in the street. So transparency, I think, is maintaining open communication and not obscuring what we're doing or why we're doing certain things. You know, for those, we've brought up youthful offender before, I have not been shy about my opinions about where the youthful offender law needs help, or where we need more state resources to make some of these things work. So I think in that sense, transparency is just keeping that dialogue alive. Now, I will say as a caveat, you know, I know the mayor likes numbers. Numbers can be difficult, and I'll be blunt, my office is not equipped to have someone sit there, collect statistics, so when we, when we have a mandate to do it, we do it. To be that proactive is difficult, because that means I'm taking, and Ashley Hill or my DB prosecutor, Tracy Leibowitz, I'm taking them off of casework to sit there and, and collect data, and that's a luxury, I have some time, but it's a luxury that no one else really has right now. I can't remember the third word offhand.
Responsive. But you sort of answered by the first two, so that's okay.
Sure, yeah, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are you getting the support and everything you need from city services? You know, our police department, Justice Center, me, anybody is, you know, here in Montpelier, you know, you talked a lot about the county, but we're, obviously, we're about Montpelier, so we want to make sure you're getting what you need.
Hate to put me on the spot with the chief sitting.
You can make them beat the roof.
No, I think that, you know, from the, from a law enforcement perspective, you have a lot to be proud of in Montpelier. You have excellent leadership, you have really dedicated professionals at both the sergeant level who are supervising and at the road level. You know, I think a lot of departments strive to be this responsive community force, and, you know, some talk the talk. Montpelier walks the walk, and I think that it's a benefit of being a well-resourced department with a really professional staff. And by and large, I have to say, we are really truly blessed to have incredibly responsive, fair, and transparent law enforcement in Washington County. It's not without hiccups or without issues that come up, but really fortunate. The Montpelier PD in particular really is a professional department, the quality of work is incredibly high, and I know many of you in the city council are probably aware of a string of burglaries that took place the end of last year and some other, you know, more high-profile crimes. Those have been investigated well, they are complex crime, very seldom on a complex case do I ever have to call back and ask for more here, and that, to me, is the world, and that means that we get better outcomes and faster outcomes.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are up to all the Town Meeting Day stuff. So the first thing is to set the date for the annual city meeting, Town Meeting Day, Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., City Hall Auditorium. Don't think this is controversial.
I was going to make that motion, but you just stated everything I needed to say. Do I have to restate it for the secretary?
Say second.
You want me to say it again? I'm looking at the order.
So you can just say so moved.
Okay, so moved.
Great.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Onto the budget.
I was just going to go quickly through.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need to open a hearing?
Yes, I believe I do. So I'm going to officially open the second public hearing on budget.
And Bill was going to run through some basics, and then we'll talk.
Just going to take a second for everything to fire up. Take a quick break if you want.
You want lights on?
It's on.
Like that?
Okay. We'll work on dimmers.
For next year, we'll have dimmers made.
It's going to be the projector.
Projector.
It is easy to see, Ashley, if you get lights. It's so, it's too much, though. Can we turn like half the lights off? No, we need to turn these off.
I can flicker them.
Yeah. Every other, every other slide. Okay. This is similar to what you've seen, this is updated from your decisions based on, at the last meeting, and obviously, this is the second and final public hearing on the city's budget and our budget proposals. After this, you'll make a decision about what to place on the ballot. Again, our budget was set up to implement our strategic plan, to continue our capital plan, and to deliver responsible services. Going through the strategic plan, our, one of our goals was community prosperity. We've funded the Montpelier Development Corporation, we've kept our planning staff with our new zoning and master plan being developed, and implementing our new TIF district. For environmental stewardship, we've kept the $5,000 for the Energy Committee, we've added one new Parks and Tree position, we have funded our stormwater projects, we've included the GMT Circulator Bus that was discussed earlier tonight, and considered having an, funding an energy planning grant to, to do an energy master plan. For our inclusive, equitable, and welcoming community, we've increased funding for our community fund, we've got new arts commission funding, we've kept our Feast program for, at the senior center, we've increased funding for Montpelier Alive, and kept our funding for our community enhancements. For sustainable infrastructure, we've increased our capital improvement and equipment plan by $25,000. We followed our water and sewer plan, we've added a Facilities and Sustainability Director to be added in October, and we've kept our Complete Streets Plan with some funding. For our thoughtfully built environment, we've included, again, the Downtown Improvement District and funding for downtown projects in our plan, and of course, our big project for the year presumably would be the parking structure. For more housing, we added $50,000 to our Housing Trust Fund, bringing it up to $110,000. We've, and then we've implemented our TIF, which I mentioned earlier, which calls for more housing. Public health and safety, we just discussed this with the state's attorney, we've added a new police officer, we've budgeted for public events that we expect will happen, we've continued flooding, counting, excuse me, funding our flood gauges, which have been very helpful, particularly over the holidays, we had a flash jam-up, and it was the gauges that caught it and allowed us to provide early notification to people that we might have some flooding conditions. So they continually prove their worth, they're also available for the They're also available for the public to look at on their own. We continue expanding our paramedic program as we hire new people at our Fire and EMS department. And we've continued Project Safe Catch as we share the state's attorney's goal to fight the opioid crisis.
So Bill, can I ask a question about the EMT of the paramedic program?
Yes.
Program whereby as we hire new staff in the Fire Department, we're looking to have them be certified at the paramedic level rather than just the EMT level?
That's correct. We, Bob's in the back, you'll correct me if I get the number wrong, but I think we have three now. Is he nodding? Okay. Yeah, can't, can't see. Three, three now, two existing employees in training. Our, our long-term goal over a multi, many-year period is, you know, have, have the whole staff as paramedics, but that's, that's a long way coming. They, they cost more. There's a lot of training and equipment involved and all that kind of thing. On the other hand, you could provide much greater services. You can charge more for the services. So at this point, we're doing it at an incremental basis, but once those two complete, there'll be five out of the fifteen, well, there's 16 counting Bob, but of the 15 that are really on the calls, it'll be a third of our, our staff. So that's a, you know, considering a couple of years ago, we didn't have any. So we're moving. It's, it's been an issue. For our responsive and responsible government, we are continuing our communications efforts, our employee wellness efforts. Our service levels are all maintained. We didn't have any reductions in service in this year's budget, which is great. Continuing our bridge article, our new Invisio software is working well. We have the public dashboard for people to see at any time. And we are developing, as you've heard me mention, our program Access Montpelier, which you will hear more about later this year. And we're hoping to set aside reserve funds for a citizen survey, our strategic planning effort, and the energy planning. So in, in real specific numbers, the budget changes right now that are, that we, council approved at the last meeting, we're increasing the capital funding by 25,000, a new police officer position, a new Parks and Trees position, a new Facilities Director position, increasing the Housing Trust Fund, a new Arts Commission funding, increasing Montpelier Alive, increasing the Community Fund, new childcare for meetings, and the one-time funding. So otherwise, I mean, everything else is basically held at the same levels, given inflation and employee costs, et cetera. Taking a look at our budget, where it comes from, about two-thirds of it is from the property taxes, the rest from various other sources. And as we look at how we spend it, this is a chart, this will be in the annual report as well, but just showing by department where our money goes. No big surprise, our, our, our big money goes to Police, Fire, and Public Works. Those are our major services and, and the capital, capital services, capital plan, excuse me. So the, the money to do the projects and the, keep the equipment and then the personnel to, to do the work. As we look at our budget, as you can see, we're over 50% personnel funded. That is how municipal government works and divides up this way. If we'd look at all the different services and take a look at the average tax bill, this is a chart, it's a little hard to read up here, it will be in the annual report, but it just gives you a snapshot of what you pay for, on average, for an individual's service. And again, it's pretty clear, almost half goes to Police, Fire, and Public Works. So our municipal rates, the, for the municipal budget, the property tax rate would be scheduled to go up 3.7 cents or 3.4% for an average tax bill increase of $85. The district heat rates were recently approved and are being implemented. The water and sewer is estimated to go up 3.5% as per our, our capital plan. And there would be no change for our sewer benefit or CSO benefit. Taking a look overall, we just got numbers from the School Department. Their budget is scheduled to go up, their residential budget will go up 4.5 cents or about 2.8%, which means overall, at the bottom in the highlight, the, the overall tax rate will go up 8 cents or about 3% from prior year. And that shows, as you can see, this is about 108, that all totals to about $186 for the average homeowner. And this is the breakout of the, so what portion goes for what? It's about 58% for schools, about 38% for the city, 3% for sewer CSO, 1% for ballot items. So that's a breakout. So that's the, the fast tour through the budget. Happy to answer any questions, of course. Many department heads are here. Today is our final public hearing. Early voting will start in mid-February. The actual voting day, as you just set, was March 5th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
I had a constituent inquiry today about one of the personnel items, but I think it applies to everything. When we have, when we're showing a, a new position we're creating and there's a dollar value associated to that, is that salary plus?
Yes.
Fringes and everything?
All in, all costs.
So at this point, if the council has more clarifying questions, do that. And then I'd like to open it up to the public for public comments. And then we'll continue on with more substantive discussion with the council. So any clarifying questions? Yes?
Which I can take from my seat. Let's turn this.
So this is.
Oh, do you want me to put the spreadsheet up?
Actually, that would be helpful for my question.
Sorry.
So while you're getting it up, I'll, I'll ask it. The, the additional parks position, not the tree management, but the additional parks position has been discussed as 65,000?
It's 55.
We had on the spreadsheet, it is 55. So I just wanted to clarify which number it is.
The, the number that we worked within the budget was 55,000. I've lately seen a different number, but the number we had was 55.
Okay, so 55 is, is our number.
Right.
Any further clarifying questions? Okay, comments from the public on the budget? If you'd introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
Hello, I'm Nancy Chikering. I live right here in Montpelier, up on Core Street, the very top of that Cliff Street Hill. So I'm really close to the park and I'm interested in that, that comment you just made because I'm here also just to get clarification. In terms of parks and trees, I, I love how we're trying to merge and carry things under bigger umbrellas. My understanding, and I may be wrong, and I am glad to see Jeff here because he might help clarify this for me. My understanding with the Emerald Ash Borer is a lot of good conversation went on about how we can be proactive, about not being like some other communities further south, not taking, you know, stepping in and dealing with that proactively. My understanding is that parks and tree position is really a tree position and not so much supporting the park and all the expansion that I would like to see them do. So I just thought I would put a plug in to see. I've been next-door neighbors to the park for 25 years and I worry about the sustainability with Jeff, who I've watched for, you know, two-plus decades. They work and Alec is right there like Jeff. They work, it's not a 40-hour-a-week job. They plow at six, they're there seven days a week. They just, they over, over, overdo and it's amazing. And it, it, it shows in the community. They have, you know, volunteers, global volunteers, they have churches putting them up and people volunteering their canoes and their chainsaws and their, you know, work parties. And I just think it's amazing what they do with their budget. And it's amazing what the city has done to prioritize that. And I love that Bill's first two slides had community prosperity and then environmental stewardship. And I just think the park and the extension of trails now into North Branch is just so much about what makes Montpelier an absolutely amazing place to live. And it's one of the things that lets us see that we're growing the 20 and 30 and 40-year-old people that I think we really need to be calling into this community if we want this community to be sustainable. That kind of recreation is critical. And I'm just blown away with what I've seen that park do for the last 25 years. So that's my plug for the park and hoping that that money is really supporting the park and not just supporting Emerald Ash Borer and tree stuff that I think is also really, really important.
So just to clarify, the additional position that was added that you saw listed there really was about trees. Specifically, we may discuss a little later, a separate position potentially that would be more related to parks.
So I, I'll jump in on that, too.
Is that a fair?
No, that's fair. So initially, there were two positions proposed, one just for trees and one just for parks. And I think in the, in, as we went through, both as a staff to recommend a budget, which we recommended the one position and the council came in with this. Currently, we split the Parks and Trees amongst the existing employees. I hate to, I don't like having my back to everybody, but we split the Parks and Trees with the existing employees and we, we get that there's maybe a, a bigger demand, but you know, all of our departments have demands and we're trying to, trying to balance that. So the feeling is that, you know, there's probably, it didn't seem like there would be tree work, you know, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year and that the, the efforts could be shared and, and that one person with trees is going to need help from parks employees anyway. And the thought was, let's try this for a year, see how it goes. We're going to have new leadership there, see what changes and what demands there are, and then reconsider the, the other staffing position after we've had a chance. It wasn't necessarily this would never be. So from my perspective, and I can't speak for the council, it wasn't as black and white as this is trees only and this is parks only. They really are a blended group. Right now, they're, the two of them do a little, so that's the answer I gave you there.
Hi, Dan Dickerson from the Parks Commission. I wanted to come up and, and also make one final push for the new parks position. And I, and I guess I wanted to expand a little bit or at least talk a little bit about what the, this new trees position, or parks and trees, however you want to frame it, what it provides, but where it actually could create some limitations. And so what it provides, I think it provides the, the city the ability to sort of think strategically about how to address Emerald Ash Borer in our street trees and our parks and, and throughout the community. But where, when it really comes down to doing the groundwork, so going out and, and addressing the huge, you know, tree care backlog that we have and also, you know, dealing with Emerald Ash Borer, you can't do that with one person. And, and so, you know, the city could say, well, all right, we'll contract with, you know, a firm to, to do some of this work or take another route. But, you know, if we, if we want trees or if we want city staff to be taking care of the trees, you need to have more people doing that. And so what happens is, you know, if we have this tree person that's going to go out and care for the street trees, you know, we're going to end up pulling a parks person to help on that or potentially both parks people to help on that. And that leaves the parks empty. And so, you know, and I don't want to say that, I mean, this, this trees position is very important. I think it's going to allow the city to do great things. But I think, you know, really, in order to address the, the backlog in trees maintenance and parks maintenance, we really need two positions. So that way, we could have at least a two-person crew doing tree work and we could always have a two-person crew doing park work. And, and it would allow us to get work done both on the trees front and the parks front. I know, you know, I know it's a cost increase and ultimately it's a tax increase, but given that the parks and trees are currently 2.4% of the city budget and, and I'm paying $50 a year, I think it's pretty reasonable to, to request this position. You know, maybe there are some residents that would be unwilling to, to take on that tax increase. But I think, given the use that our parks receive and given that, you know, on top of the other benefits of having this new position, we could also increase staff presence within the park to maybe educate people on, on canine care and, and bikes. So that way, it reduces some of the consternation on Front Porch Forum. You know, there are just a, a lot of ways that this position would benefit the city. And so I really strongly implore the city council to approve the, the funding for this. And sorry, I've gone too long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't get to read yet.
Hi, my name is Costa Ranjo. I am also on the Parks Commission. I'm on North Park Drive. And this is Celeste. And my, like many of you, my family has chosen to live in Montpelier and chosen where to live in Montpelier because of our parks. And I've chosen to give back to our parks. I work in conservation as my profession. I fundraise. I've already been helping the parks address some of those needs and I'm glad to do that. And in recent years, we've invested in the expansion of our parks and the expansion of our services. There are new trails in North Branch Park. There are plans to add Confluence Park in the future. And the parks are something that draw young families like my own to come live here and stay here and invest in this community. We've invested in expanding our parks and we have not invested in expanding the staff to run our parks. And that's a problem. And I'm hoping that you guys will consider adding an additional parks person. We've discussed the tree position. That is not a parks position. They're separate. We, if we want to invest in the future of our parks, we need to invest in the staff to keep them the way they are and make them even better for the future. Thank you.
Go. John Snell, a tree board among other things, frequenter of the parks. I appreciate the, coming back here and talking and, and clarifying that the person I supported you in, in bringing on for trees is still an essential person. And that's who shows up in the budget. And we're, that person's already at work. They've already made a difference. It's going to continue to make a difference in the backlog as well as in dealing with Emerald Ash Borer. I have long thought that we needed an additional parks person. And when I started to talk with Jeff about what's going on with his retirement, it became very clear that when he retires, basically, we're going to be down one and a half people, not one person. And, you know, I, I, I've talked to Jeff about how disorganized he can be sometimes, but I also will tell you that there is nobody in this town who can pull in volunteers like that guy. It takes time. It takes time to manage them. And yet, if we were to run DPW with as many volunteers as Parks does, we'd be in trouble. So I think that it's pretty clear to me that with, with Jeff retiring, with the expansion, not only of the size of the park, adding now a new, new trail along the river, what's formerly known as the Bike Path, and, and also adding new events that have been really well-received by the community in the parks, one of which will be next week again, that, that there's, there's just a tremendous demand for the system of parks that we have. And they create immense value. They are a pull to people to come here and live here, especially young families. So I'm asking you to put the money back in for another person. I think we need that person and that that person will be well utilized with our new parks director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Polly Nickel and I'm here representing the Housing Task Force. And I'm here to talk about funding for the Housing Trust Fund. Two weeks ago, I attended an amazing event and a number of you were there. And it was the opening of the French Block, which after 80 years, there will now be people living in those apartments. And I think that event just speaks for itself in terms of what a small, relatively small investment of community resources in that case, Housing Trust Fund, can do for a city. And I used to work as a, as a public funder of affordable housing and I still have a lot of friends in that, in that area. And they say repeatedly that the investments that a city like Montpelier makes make all the difference in the world and that in a very hyper-competitive funding environment really gives us a leg up. And the, the money that the Housing Trust Fund invested in the French Block leveraged millions of dollars, both from private investors like banks but also public funding. So on behalf of the Task Force, we are very pleased with the level of funding that came out of the last hearing. And we would urge you to keep it that way. And we think that together, we can continue to make progress on both affordability and availability of housing for people in Montpelier, all economic strategy. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So.
So, council, what is your interest? Do you like it as it is? Do you want to change anything? Where do you want to go? Go ahead, Connor.
To the risk of being a flip-flopper, I supported the parks position before I opposed it. Spent a lot of time the last couple of weeks just talking to constituents, and I really do believe there's an appetite for this in the community. You know, the expansion. My hang-up initially was when we were talking about the part-time position, was I thought this would be overwhelming to put on anybody for a part-time job. In effect, it would create a full-time position with a part-time person doing the work. So I think I'd like to propose putting a full-time position in the budget this time around, but maybe starting six months in the fiscal year, so that it would start in January, I believe. And to be honest, I haven't done the math on it yet. I'd like to put that on the table, and if it's appropriate, I'd make a motion to do it.
Second.
Any further thoughts on that? Let's go, Rosie then, Ashley.
So, two concerns. First, I feel like we've already done a little bit of a disservice and a little bit of hiding the ball here by playing that same trick with the new facility director position and starting it partway through the year so that the city doesn't see the full budget impact this year, but we will be stuck with it next year unless we want to lay somebody off. So I'm really uncomfortable with playing that game again here. And I also want to say that I appreciated the council last time, considered this thoroughly, and decided to make the hard decision to cut that addition. It's not a cut of a position, because the position doesn't exist yet, but to not add that new position at this time, I'm very concerned that our tax rate is growing so much higher than the cost of living increase that many living on a fixed income will receive next year. Our social safety net is really fragile right now. I'm hearing every day from folks who never would have thought that they would have needed assistance, and are now finding themselves wondering where they can get assistance. And so this is not the year to play that game, and this is not the year to increase even as much as 3.4%. Frankly, I'm still not feeling good there. And to, you know, I'm sure that if we add this position, the budget will pass. That's not my concern. I'm not concerned that voters will vote the budget down. I'm concerned about the people who don't have a voice at the table, and who are really struggling and on a fixed income, and not able to get the assistance that they need. So I'm very much opposed to that.
I'm going to echo a lot of what Rosie said. I was just doing some math over here, and I think the minimum wage in Vermont is now like $10.78 an hour. And according to a number of sites, the average rent for an apartment here is $950. I'm not sure where the $950 a month apartments are in Montpelier. I have not been able to find them in all of my years here. And so I was waiting to see what the school budget numbers would look like. And it looks like the overall tax bill, as it is with this budget at the 3.42, which is too high for me even, you know, it's $185 extra a year. And for the folks who can absorb $185 extra per year, that's great, and that's fine. And, you know, that increase is sort of not taking away anything. It's maybe taking away some discretionary income, or some, you know, some savings or something where they're not going to feel it. But doing the math out, at $10.78 an hour, that, assuming a 40-hour work week, that's 17, let's see, 17.2480 a month, and then I did a 30% reduction for taxes, and, you know, and whatever else sort of comes off the top, which leaves you with $12.0736, and then you subtract $950, which is the average rent rate now, which gives you a whopping, I want to say it is, let's see, $257.36 left, if you're working full-time on minimum wage, finding some magical unicorn apartment that I have yet to find in this city. Then, when you talk about raising property taxes, even, you know, even $185 a year, I mean, that translates in significant ways when it comes to rental properties and things like that. And I would love to believe that all landlords are altruistic, but in all of the years that I've been renting, when property taxes go up, what typically happens is renters do experience an increase. And I just don't see where folks who are working for minimum wage, let alone even $15 an hour in our community, are going to be able to absorb, you know, a rent increase like that, when, you know, that doesn't even include health insurance, and you don't qualify, at least at, you know, 125% of the federal poverty guideline, on a $10.78 an hour wage, let alone at a $15 an hour wage. And I love a lot about Montpelier. I love our parks. I value so much the work that our employees put in, and I know every city employee puts in extra. Anyone who works in government puts in extra. I do it myself all the time. But what I cannot do is go home, and, you know, when my friends and my neighbors are looking at me saying, I can't afford to live here, I have to start looking elsewhere, you know, I can't in good conscience support a budget with even a 3.42% increase. I'd been thinking like 2.8 to 3.2, somewhere in there. But this directly impacts a lot of the people that I love and care about in our community, and I appreciate the need that Montpelier has. But I also appreciate that in order to keep this a place where every single person who is already here, and some of the folks that we want to move here, can afford to be here, this is not sustainable.
Donna.
Well, I take all your comments about the budget in general, but I'm not going to want to see the parks held hostage for the total objection to the amount of what we're putting in our budget. So if you want to go and open all the items, fine, but the parks really need a full-time position. And I'd like to see it full-time for a full year, but at least Connor was offering a compromise that I could go with. It's better than nothing. But I don't think the parks, it's a small, small 2.4% of our budget now should be the one to suffer. If you want to go and look at all the other items, I'll go there. But I'm not going to put it on the parks to be the one not to get what they need.
Other comments? Glenn.
I don't know if I'm going to be able to add much. I'm also a flip-flopper, since I supported this added position at the first workshop, and then agreed to take it off at the first hearing. I am, I continue to be conflicted about this. I think that it seems clear to me that we could very happily use more staff in parks. The Parks Commission, who are elected to take care of a lot of that, have told us that we should. At the same time, it does make sense to me that, from a kind of structural organizational point of view, we have one new employee this year working on trees. We're going to be hiring a new director. That new director could potentially be the best person to be directly involved in hiring another person if we need one next year. I would, I think, I would love to see us hire another person for fiscal year '21 if we need to, and have that conversation then. Because while I hear a lot of the arguments, I'm not sure I quite feel the urgency that we need a new position, a new full-time position right now, as opposed to next year. That said, there have been some really strong arguments, and many of them, over the last couple of weeks, in favor of the new parks position. And I can't say I'm not swayed by those. I really appreciate the conversation. I still don't know. I thought I would be fixed by now, and I'm not. So I think that's all I have to say at the moment.
Can Bill put some numbers in? I can't get your spreadsheet you sent us to be active. It won't accept my numbers.
Sorry. What do you want? The half position?
Yeah, the parks.
27.5?
Well, so, Todd, is that, would that be an accurate number for...
Well, that's half of 55.
Right, but it's, benefits might not make it half.
Well.
Or maybe it does, because if it's starting in January. Any thoughts, Todd?
I'll just put it here.
Bill, you've got $5,000.
I don't know what's not popping up.
It's really difficult to predict that, because depending on who we hire, and whether they're on a family plan or a single plan, whether they opt out of benefits because they have coverage somewhere else, a lot of people stay on their plans until they're 26 years old, which would be much cheaper. So there's a sway of $20,000 essentially in the benefit package, just due to health insurance, potentially.
Can I ask you, since you're here, what if this position was contracted? That would not necessarily obligate us to hire it the next year, but maybe reevaluate whether or not it was really needed by the following year.
Contracting is certainly possible. You run the risk of running afoul of state labor laws, just because you have to be, you know, it has to be truly an independent person that does the work as a business, has their own insurance, holds a shingle out to operate as such, and that we don't have control over their schedule. So they would be setting their own hours, and we would be paying them based on that. So it's certainly a possibility. I just want to be careful that we don't just grab an individual.
Yep, okay. Donna, yeah?
I'm just trying to read the numbers. Is that my glass reading glasses on?
You mean down here?
It said 92.
Yeah, this is 92.
Okay.
3.71.
3.7.
Yeah.
Okay, from 3.5, okay.
Yeah.
I asked what the difference is with that number added there, Bill, from previous year?
It was 3.42 before.
Eighty. Seven dollars.
And, oh, and a $7 difference? Rosie?
Just want to point out again, though, that you're making, you're forcing a future council to make, to take the brunt of the decision that you're making. It looks like only $7 this year, but once we hire that person, they're a member of our community, and I can't imagine that we would be able to let them go if we decided we didn't actually need their services. The public, even if the council made the decision, the public outcry to lay off a particular individual who worked in our parks would be insane. I mean, we wouldn't be able to do it. So once you're making the decision to put this position in, it's until that person decides that they'd like to leave.
Glenn, would you like a two-minute, like, recess?
I don't...
Donna, would you like just a couple-minute recess?
Practically, on a practical aspect, I would, yes.
Okay. I will just say, there have been times when I have felt very conflicted, and I just needed like a minute to collect my thoughts, and I just want to make sure that I offer that to you, if you want that.
Thank you. I think I'm slower than you. I would need more than that. But since we could use a recess anyway, let's do it.
But Jack, before we have a recess, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I supported this before. I think that the idea that we're losing expertise and a lot of overtime and having Jeff retire was persuasive to me. I'll also point out that, as all of you know, we've, in the last several days, we've received a tremendous volume of email from residents supporting this position. And I don't truly think that we're here on the council simply to be a mouthpiece for people who, for the people in the community. I think that one of the things people should expect from all of us on the council is our judgment on the issues that come before us. But it's hard to ignore that there's, there's a lot of support for this. Now, I don't know how much 10 emails translates to in terms of overall popular support. That's a question that legislators deal with all over the place, but it seems like a pretty popular position. So I'm not, I supported it before, and I continue to support it.
So I'll just weigh in and say, there was a proposal, there was this number being floated around, the $65,000. And I believe the reason there was this discrepancy was because there was this $10,000 potential for some additional parks help over the summer. And that was, that was most interesting to me. I felt like, well, we could do something temporary, hire some people over the summer, and do, you know, increase, you know, the parks staff that way, when it would certainly be useful. If, well, if, depending on wherever we land, I'm not in favor of a full-time position, but I would entertain the half. So, anyway, I'll just leave it there for now, and let's take a two, five-minute, well, let's go, realistically, it's going to be five minutes. So, let's go with a five-minute break. Okay, we are all back, so we're going to come back from our recess. And so just to get things started, Bill, you have a comment about the data here.
Just piece of information. Obviously, what you decide to do, where you choose to set your priorities, is your call. But I want to make sure everyone's dealing with correct information. There was a comment made about how we had not changed the parks staff. And I haven't had a chance to go research this, but I think I can say fairly accurately from memory, I know when I started here, it was 24 years ago, there was one-quarter time position. Eventually, it got increased to half, three-quarters, and a full-time. Then we've added the second full-time position that was in there. When we consolidated with, put together some of the community services, some of the admin services, such as booking shelters and publicity brochures, have all been picked up by admin folks that used to be done by parks. So it's not really adding people, it's taking responsibilities off. So it may well be the time that we need additional folks, but it isn't totally accurate to say that we've not increased staffing over a period of time. As the parks have grown, we have done that. And as well as adding the part-time tree positions.
Sure. And I wanted to just also add, I had a quick conversation reminding me that we do, the administration or some of the admin work is done by people in the...
That's what I was just saying, the community services piece that does that. So, yeah, we went from one-quarter position to now two-full, plus the admin services, plus the...
Got you, okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody have any further comments?
I just wanted to get a...
Yeah, go ahead.
Dan Dickerson again from the Parks Commission. I did want to sort of make an attempt to address some of the concerns that Councilwoman Hill and Councilwoman Murray had. You know, this position, you know, it doesn't need to be a lawyer or somebody with a physics degree. It could be somebody that's coming off of substance abuse, somebody that's coming out of the criminal justice system that needs a new opportunity. This is somebody that would go into the parks and essentially do groundwork, you know, repairing trails, pulling invasive species. You know, it's good life experience for anyone. And so it does, you know, yes, there would still be people that would have to make ends meet on low incomes, but it would create an opportunity for somebody that's maybe making minimum wage now to move up a little bit and have an opportunity to really make a difference for the community. And so I, you know, it doesn't fully address your current concerns, but it is an opportunity for somebody that maybe is trying to move up a little bit.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Just one more quick one, because I do hear what Bill's saying about that other services have been added on to the park, and yet, the park has expanded, and the missions of the park have expanded tremendously, especially in the last five years or so. And that's going to happen again with the addition of the new bike path. That'll be a park responsibility. So I think we've added in enough that it's time for another person.
Go ahead, Rosie.
I'm just seeing Bill make a face about the bike path, and I'm just wondering if that's actually our plan. I thought it was going to be a DPW responsibility.
Yeah, the bike, I don't want to get into an intramural food fight with our staff. We can talk about that tomorrow morning. But typically, the bike paths are maintained with, by DPW. with, by DPW. I know the park does the piece about, the peace park out on that one. But I, you know, maybe they've had a discussion, have decided the parks are going to do it.
Invasive.
Of invasive species. Again, I'm not sure why that's the parks.
Okay, if, do you, okay, go ahead, Glenn.
Yes. So I think I did come to something, and it may be a little awkward, because what I feel like at the moment is going with my instinct, which is when somebody asks, say yes. And, yeah, Bill's laughing at that. And, and I do think that with, with all of the arguments that have been put forward in favor of a new parks position, I think that, that I'm, I'm on board with that. And at the same time, I really think that Rosie's point about not saddling the future council with a half a position is sensible. So I'd actually put in the whole position at 55. Right. I, I feel like I need to say something else about it, and I'm not sure what it is. But I think your, your comment about the parks being the target kind of of this, this budget pressure at this point, I think it's kind of just because that's how it came down to the timing. But I think that, to me, the budget number higher than cost of living increase at all, once it's higher than cost of living increase, it's, it's, it's higher in a way. And beyond that, a lot of the little adjustments, you know, an extra few dollars here or there, it starts to feel like we're doing a disservice to the whole process. And I would say a whole position or not a position. And that's, that's where I am. I would move that we put the full parks position in at 55 grand.
We've got a motion already on the table, so we've got to vote on that in that.
Yeah, okay.
You could amend it.
Or-
I can, all right, there we go. I amend, I'll suggest an amendment that we go from the half a position to full position.
Is there-
I'll second.
Okay, so I will just say that I think, I mean-
Do we have to vote on the amendment to-
Yes, amendment first, and then the other motion. So I guess I would just add that, I, I mean, we all know that Jeff does a wonderful job, and he's, it's, he's also just an X-factor, right? Like, because what is the new person going to be like, right? And how is that time-wise going to work? So my inclination is to, is to wait and not, not go full-time at this point. But, but that's just what I would advise. So, any other further comments about this amendment? No? Okay, all right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Nay.
Okay, I think that it meant that it did not pass. I think I heard enough noes there. It did not pass. Okay. So we're back to the original motion of a half-time position. And there's a motion on the table? Any further discussion about that? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so I think that carries. So we're at a half, half position there, but starting, sure, full-time, but starting in January '27. Is that, okay, great. Okay, any other changes or are we done, team?
I guess I'm just going to put out there one more time. You know, we've had this discussion so many times, and I've lost every time, so let's just go. Let's do it. I was going to propose more cuts, but we've had, we know where we are.
Fair enough. Any further comments? I think we, what do we need to do at this point? Do we need to vote this budget altogether? And then close, and then, I'll close the public hearing after-
Close public hearing, then vote.
Either-
You should probably close the hearing-
Okay.
And then vote.
Before we close the public hearing, though, if anyone would like to offer any further comments on the budget? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and is there a motion on the budget as proposed so far with this amendment?
I move that we adopt the budget as reflected by the changes we made tonight.
Further-
I'll second.
Further discussion? Okay.
Just going to say again that it is the responsibility of the council to look out for more than just the people who write us the emails and who have the ability to attend meetings. And I'm very concerned that this council doesn't do that. And we need to be looking out for the voices that aren't at the table. So.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Nay.
Okay, so the budget passes. And thank you all for your discussion. All right, so we are going to move on to this charter amendment. So this is also a public hearing. So I'm going to open up the public hearing on the proposed charter change regarding energy efficiency. And I'm going to welcome Richard Fazey back up to the table. He was with us last time. And I know, Rosie, you weren't here last time to necessarily meet Richard Fazey, so I'll let him introduce himself. I think last time I had made the comment that I should probably not be both the champion and the expert and try to moderate the meeting all at the same time. And so we're grateful to have you here, Richard. So I'll let you introduce yourself, I guess.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Richard Fazey. I live in Starkspurrow, so I'm not a Montpelier resident. But I have a energy consulting firm called Energy Futures Group in Heinsburg, and have been working on building energy labeling issues for quite a while, including a number of stakeholder groups and part of the discussion at the city, at the state level for a number of years. So I'm basically here as a resource to help answer any questions or, and support this initiative moving forward.
Okay, any questions about the charter amendment?
You should probably open the public hearing.
Oh, I think, did I?
Did you do that?
Well, if I didn't, I'll do it now. I thought I did, but-
Seek any comment.
Opening the, the public hearing for the, the second public hearing on this charter amendment. Yeah, Rosie?
I didn't get a chance to watch the last meeting. I just read the minutes, and I can't remember if there was discussion about inserting energy before efficiency standards. Was that already dealt with?
Yes.
And did we do it?
We did, and the, the language that's attached here also does not have the word "energy." So let's assume that, that, because that's what we approved last time, that that's, should be in here as well. But we can make that clear.
And you should, yeah, well, you can do it, and you can also do it when you vote the warning.
Yeah.
You should definitely vote.
Because it's, the language is on, oh, it doesn't have it on the warning.
It should be on, on the warning as, as a whole.
It's, well, the word "energy" is not in the-
Oh, in the warning, right, so.
In the warning.
It wouldn't be the only change, though, because the budget, well-
Yeah, we know we have to change that.
Yeah, we'll get a new number there. But, yeah, just making a note that, to make sure that it's, that change is made in, at least on, well, really in both places, I suppose. Okay.
So it will read minimum energy efficiency standards.
Yes. Jack?
At a tiny point, I just noticed in the language, the way it was distributed to the council, there's a space missing between "powers" and "and" in the heading.
Oh, "power sand."
"Power sand," yeah.
Oh, "power sand."
And I don't know if that's-
I don't think that's really how it is in the, in the charter, so we can just double-check that, but yes. And that is not on the warning, so should be, should be fine. Any further questions? Okay, any comments from the public? Okay.
I always have at least two with me.
Tim Heaney, real estate broker in Montpelier and residents. Been chair of the Government Affairs Committee for Mont Realtors for a number of years, and happy more. But I think I've talked with you on conference calls, Richard, and some of those meetings. So basically, talked with Ann a couple weeks ago about this. She called and said, like, oh, I'm thinking of this, you know, some ordinances and thoughts on energy efficiency. And listen, I'm here tonight, and it's the second reading on this charter change. I'm like, whoa, where'd this come from? So it seems like it's come up quickly. From my experience at the state level, listening to those conversations with efficiency Vermont, and the legislatures considered policies for energy efficiency, the devil's in the details on this one. And there's a lot of details to understand. I'm not sure Montpelier's in a position, in terms of governments, to take on another level of governance and enforcement. I think we've got our hands full right now in terms of building and planning and what we can really handle. So I think you should be very careful about this. The overall charter change piece that I read for the first time tonight, when I looked at the agenda, is really open. It says, what, I don't even have it in front of me. It was like local, state, and other policies. It's a little bit too jello for me. I'd like to see it be more specific. And I also think it's well-motivated, but if you're concerned about housing and taking care of people, providing good, safe environments where they can be comfortable, there's some other issues we need to talk about as well that might slide ahead on my chart over this. We own a number of properties. We work hard at making them efficient. It's an inch-by-inch process sometimes, but it costs a lot of money. And I think a lot of people do keep investing in efficiency, even if tenants are paying the energy bills and landlords aren't. We try to. But I think that the piece that I'm really concerned about here is how you tie it together and look at issues like, I go through a lot of houses, a lot of multifamily properties, probably as many as anyone in Montpelier. There's a lot of issues we should be talking about if you want to talk about making housing safer and better. Jack, you know it. I mean, wiring, my goodness. We hit more buildings with knob and tube wiring that's still active. We hit it every day in our office, generating sales. Insurance companies won't insure them anymore for new buyers. Lenders don't want to touch them. They're out there, they're rented, people are living in them, and there are no incentives to improve those situations. I think if you really want to do something right, this ordinance is, you know, the concept is great, but I think you're misguided. I think you really should have a, write together a group, decide what really the priority should be, and align those. And I think some of those priorities need to be some real safety issues. Because you really want to wire the place first and get the wiring right, and then you add the insulation. It's kind of a meathead move to add the insulation and then go back and have to tear it all out and rewire the place, for what it's worth. It's just by lack of focus. But I guess I'm really a little spun up about this. I'm surprised there hasn't been more conversation, and I hope you want to prove it tonight, and we'll open it up for a bigger dialogue. Thanks.
Go ahead, Donna.
Do you think if we added some incentive, maybe, whether it's a loan process or some financial support, that we want to head with this amendment and then consider that that's part of our responsibility, is to look for a way to support that happening financially?
What do you say, make that happen? Are you talking efficiency moves or making housing better?
Well, the efficiency moves here-
Yeah.
That ultimately will make housing better, but if we also try to do it in some way that's a partnership.
I do think it's a great idea. I think that's needed, because there are a lot of old buildings in Montpelier. The bulk of our housing stock is pre-1978.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of issues that go within that kind of housing, in addition to energy issues.
So, Tim, I just want to add, I, so I hear you about the, like, you know, that there's a, just a multiplicitude of issues that flag our housing stock. And I, I guess I would say that I don't think these things are mutually exclusive. Let's talk about all the things that need to happen.
Exactly.
So I would love to talk further with you about, or, or any subgroup of people interested in housing, about how we can be addressing, particularly rental, safety in Montpelier. But I, but I don't hear that necessarily as precluding this. So let's talk about, you know, how we can be doing all of the above. And, and, you know, let's, let's, and we'll work out the details, you know, as they, as they come up.
Yeah, exactly. Just, efficiency Vermont's a great organization, but they have a mission that's pretty focused. And I think we need a little bigger picture here that that can be part of. So I think that's really the same thing.
Future conversation, let's do it. Great, thank you. Further comments? I guess, Rosie?
So I had a lot of concerns with the first version of this ordinance, or not ordinance, it's not an ordinance, it's a charter change. And I appreciate the new language because it doesn't nail us down to a specific ordinance change, and it gives us the time to think through the pros and cons of every potential ordinance change after we get permission to do it. So I really appreciate, Tim, everything that you say there, because I think, I think you're right. There are a lot of, this is not, this is not a solution, but I think the idea is that we can get permission to do this work and then, then do the, the hard work of figuring out what ordinance gets at these goals, and what are the implications of that, and bring in a lot of stakeholders of that in the future. That's my hope. I would urge this council to not be, not rush too, too fast into two ordinances under this without thinking things through. But I am willing to support this because it doesn't dictate a specific course of action.
I'll echo much of what Rosie said. I have some specific policy ideas and some potential ordinances that I'm interested in raising. It's just, wanted to focus on all of this stuff for now and sort of see what happens there. But I think there are still some very tangible things that, as a, as a city, that we can do in terms of renters' rights and things like that, that I have been talking to other municipalities in the area and sort of doing some research on my own, just in terms of, you know, what redressed the tenants have and, and things like that. So I agree that this is a good starting point, but there's still a lot of, of other pieces that have to come into place, because energy efficiency is awesome, but if nobody can afford to be in those places because we've prioritized one thing over another, or, so.
Great. Okay, further comments? Any further comments from the public? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing on that. And just looking at our notes here, do we need, we need to approve this?
Even though you're going to approve the warning, you should approve the charter language, final charter language. If you want to make sure that energy language is in there, then specifically put it in.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the proposed energy efficiency charter term, and with the addition of the word "energy" on the first line.
Okay.
One second.
Further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. And on to the warning of the, or, of the-
The ballot.
The ballot, yeah, right.
So we should have a new number for the budget, for Article V.
Sir, excuse me, Article V has increased by the $27,500 for the half-part position. So the new number is $9,466,621. And in addition, I have just updated the warning to reflect the charter amendment, first sentence to read, enact ordinances enforcing quite a long energy efficiency standards. The version that you have in front of you is the same as if you're receiving your signature, minus those new changes.
Maybe we open the public-
Actually, I think it's 9466121.
9466121.
It's just-
Yeah, I think that's correct.
It's like a $500 difference, but-
Where did he go?
He went to double-check it. He didn't believe anything. Trust and verify, right?
This doesn't say that it's a public hearing.
It's-
Oh, it is, it should, it is a, well, it says in the subject. So I'll open the public hearing on the warning of the ballot. So I'll open the public hearing on the warning of the ballot.
So I would add that a couple of things on that besides the number change and the language change, call a couple of things to attention. One, an initial draft of the ballot included a potential petitioned article concerning the parking structure. Sheila wants to report on that?
Oh, sure. So Article 12 is going to be struck because we didn't receive enough petition signatures. We only received 180 verified signatures by the deadline today.
Okay. Thank you. Now, while we're talking about that, I just want to say, I sort of half expected that maybe someone would be here from that group. And had they been here, I had a couple of questions I was hoping to ask them, so I'll just going to say them out loud now and hopefully follow up with them later. One was of the list of criteria on the petition that they, you know, had been circulating. I was curious if the group that's appealing, the DRB decision, had a list of concerns that are outside of those criteria, or if that was the extent of their concerns. I was also curious about really what their aim was, like what is their goal in the, with the petition or with the appeal. I was very encouraged to read Andrea Standard's remarks in the bridge the other day, that she's looking for improvements to the project, and I would love to talk about that. So to that end, I mean, I had, last time they were here to talk about the petition, they had, you know, we had, I had thought that we might be meeting at some point, and then they appealed. So once lawyers are involved, it gets a little trickier, but I guess I would say that I, so they, I want you to know that no one reached out to me from their group to get in touch about resolving those issues, but I'm just going to say publicly right now that I'm going to reach out to them, and while I'm not in a position to negotiate anything, I still would love to hear from them. I know they have concerns about the content of the project as well as the process that happened around it, and I am open to hearing all of that. So, you know, if the city can be learning from this process, basically, from going through this, I am certainly open to that. So, anyway, so I just want you all to know, that's my plan, going to be reaching out to them very soon.
The only other issue that actually council member Hill raised, and unfortunately we don't have John here, although maybe Sheila can answer this, is the issue, the central Vermont Public Safety Authority. We're electing a position for that, even though we don't know what its current status is.
You didn't get that person's petition?
Oh, there you go, Donna would know.
And they believe Kim Machini is the nat'ler who's running?
Right, but is it, is it still continuing? That's what we weren't sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Did we end up putting money in the budget for that?
You don't put money, we put it on the budget. We have our own. You could put it on the ballot. We chose not to put it on the ballot. Tried to explain that earlier.
Okay, so, so you're referring to Article 4?
Yeah.
I was wondering about that too, because it was missing the name. So did you get Kim's petition?
Oh, well, so this is the warning, the actual ballot has the candidates' names. Like, for example, it just says to elect one school district, you know, one city council member, those kind of things, so.
But you do have his petition.
I believe so, yes. We have another week anyway before petitions are due.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, but I think, maybe I was confused. Sheila, can you repeat what you said? Article 12 has been struck? Is that what?
It's not Article 12 on this, they took it off already.
Oh, I see, okay. The former Article 12.
It was the former Article.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
So that's it, those were my only things to call out.
So, any other public comment about the warning? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing there, and I think we need to vote to approve the ballot as amended. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ballot as amended.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, oh, did you want to?
I just wanted to confirm that the city manager was absolutely right and my, I'm going to be a little bit clumsy. I'm going to blame the Band-Aid, but it is 121.
There we go, great, okay. So do we need to clarify that in our motion? Do you want to clarify that, Donna?
I didn't list a number. So I said as amended, and Bill had amended earlier.
I'll state it and then someone can move it. So you're voting to approve the warning as presented, except that Article 5 will include the number 9,466,121, and Article 14 will include, add the word "energy" between minimum and efficiency.
And that, Donna, that was your intent?
Yes, that was my intent.
Great. Second agrees, okay.
Still second.
Great, so further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I want to be clear in my aye vote, that is to approve the petition, not necessarily anything with relation to the items in it, but...
Yep, fair, it's okay.
I just, people are watching and it's, you know, it's a confusing process, so I just want to...
Approving the ballot.
Okay. All right, so that is the end of our regular business, which is great. So we're going to move on. Oh, did I close the public hearing? I think I did.
Yeah, I think you did.
Okay, so moving on to council reports.
Ask clerk if she's got it down, she's the one that...
You got it, okay. Who would like to start? Go ahead, Rosie.
You can start. I just wanted to let folks know that I know federal employees and others impacted by the federal shutdown are really struggling, and we do have a number of federal employees who live and work in Montpelier. One source of help is the free and reduced, is the school meal program, and anybody at any time throughout the year who has a change in income, who has children in the schools is welcome to submit an updated application for free and reduced-priced meals, and that, you know, they can reach out to their school to get that application or find that application on the web. And certainly, having a $0 paycheck is a change in income, so that is one form of assistance. I know that Capstone and the Vermont Food Bank and a bunch of other community organizations have been also trying to put together some resources as well, and I appreciated Ashley bringing that up earlier and suggesting that we think about, you know, what can Montpelier do. And certainly recognizing that lots of other folks face financial hardship all the time as well, but this is a group of folks who has really been, I think we all have a lot of opinions about this shutdown, and so I just wanted to put that out there as a resource that's available to anybody who has a change of income at any point in the year and is struggling. I also wanted to, again, make a plug for Running for City Council. This is a lovely early meeting tonight, so don't take this as your sample meeting.
That's an endorsement. You haven't read my report yet.
But, but I, as you know, I'm not running, so I would encourage folks to run for District 1 or to run for any seat. A little competition's great for the community, and there are other seats available on some of our, the Parks Commission and we all, we just, Cemetery, so if you are feeling like you need to do something in this time of crazy political upheaval, this is a good step to take. So that's my plug for Running. I'm happy to talk to anybody who is interested about what the job entails.
Thank you.
I would first and foremost like to thank Chief in the back there. I understand that he was at the State House today representing police across the state of Vermont and shared some really great information about what we here in Montpelier are doing in terms of fair and impartial policing. And I know that there are a lot of organizations that are really looking to agencies like Montpelier to sort of see what we're doing and where we can all work together to improve what is currently happening and sort of set those goals for where we all want to be. So I really appreciate that Chief could be there today to represent Montpelier, but to also represent other law enforcement in Vermont. I also want to echo part of what Rosie said. I know that the Vermont Food Bank and other agencies here in central Vermont who are really just coming together in remarkable ways to make sure that those who did not anticipate being without pay for this long are able to at least maintain some semblance of food security during a really uncertain time. I also really want to thank, and I know I came in a couple of minutes late, but DPW has really been out there at it, nonstop. You know, I have been getting up really early lately and, you know, people are out doing the streets, they're out doing the sidewalks, and that's a really, that to me is what, like, that's why we're all here. That's why we are civil servants, and I really appreciate how much extra our city staff and our council give back to our community, and I think we all feel like we should be doing more sometimes, but I also think it's important to acknowledge when we see it, so.
Thanks. Over there. Donna or Glenn? One of you? Go ahead.
Okay. I will not be at Baguio's tomorrow morning because today is Thursday, I was there this And I'm managing to keep track of that, more or less. It's really been going great, and I continue to invite everyone to join me Thursday mornings, talk about this or whatever else. I've also been in touch with folks at Another Way, and I may hold future talk and listen sessions there instead of Baguio's or in addition to trying to figure that out. The other thing I want to mention is I'm really pleased and excited about the new Public Art Commission that we have been working on, and I want to let everyone know, if you don't already know, that the application process is now open. You have until February 15th, I believe, to submit if you would like to be a commissioner on the Public Art Commission, and I think it would be great to get a lot of really strong applications. I really look forward to that appointment, so thank you and see you soon.
I'm good.
Oh, now you're going to make me feel bad. Okay.
Well, no, just the Regional Planning Commission, I'm on the TAC, and we did have three bridges in Montpelier, and Tom and Kurt were very helpful to me, and we got the three bridges to be number two, three, and four in the region. We didn't get place one, Northfield Bridge is in worse shape. And also, GMT is going to be reducing services. They're having a board meeting on January 29th in Burlington, 7:30 in the morning. I'm not going to be back yet, so if anybody wants to go...
Wait, did you say 7:30 a.m.?
A.m. 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. in the morning, yes.
And I'm sorry, which date?
January, January, yeah, January 29th.
I'm sorry, that's a public hearing?
They're having a board meeting.
A board meeting, okay.
Yes, and we do have a local person, Bonnie Waggoner? How do you say her name?
Wanniger.
What, okay.
From the regional director, yes.
Regional Planning Commission Director. She actually got herself on the board this past year and has been a great conduit for information, and she is watching out for central Vermont. But it does look like it is more the outreach areas and not Burlington that's being hit. So even though Next Gen has plans, some of those may be impacted. And they are, GMT is having more public hearings in February, but they didn't have the dates yet posted. I also wanted to mention the Park Commission has been approached by the FAT Bikes. Actually, it's the same Mamba group for FAT Bikes, in case you don't know it. It's bikes, I guess, big tires, but they also have less air to go charging down the hill when there's snow conditions are right. So that's another one of those new issues that indeed have some conflicts with walkers and skiers, and so there'll be some meetings at the Park Commission that you may hear about. And likewise, please, cars, don't ignore the pedestrians, all that splashy, wet ice. You know, I got hit, many people have complained to me, and pedestrians likewise. All this water from the rain is stuck in the sidewalks, Public Works can't get it out. Please be careful, and people will have to walk on the street until it gets recovered through lots of freezing snow and then work from DPW. So the next couple of days are going to be nasty for everybody, and just share the roadways and be considerate. Thank you.
And just remember, they do have something. I was, happened to be at the State House this morning for an event at work, and I was talking to one of the members of the House Government Ops Committee, which has a jurisdiction for our charter changes, and he said that there are already many bills introduced in the legislature to ban plastic bags, and so we were, he's anticipating a pretty good reception for our charter change, and he knew more about that than about the non-citizen voting, but I think we're potentially looking good.
So I did remember, sorry. I had chatted with Bill about this today. I had promised at one point last month, or maybe the month before, that I would write a draft of a letter to our legislators about public meeting law changes that might be useful to us. I have not gotten to that. I have been absolutely underwater at work, and I do not anticipate getting to that. So I am putting that out there, if somebody else wants to write that or, you know, work with Bill on that, or, you know, if it's not important, we can drop it as well, but I can't do that at this point, so.
Thank you.
Just solidifying your reputation as a slacker.
I know, such a slacker.
Oh, and, I forgot the evaluations.
Oh, yeah. Well, before we leave this, was there anybody else that wants to pick up writing that? If not, that's fine, but...
What were you writing about, the open meeting laws?
So, we wanted to suggest to the legislature that we would benefit from being able to have some kind of public electronic message board where we could have some preliminary discussions in a public setting but online, where the public could read them and see them, and that might save some time in our meetings and actually be more accessible because people could easily see what we'd said rather than having to tune in or watch a video recording or that kind of thing. So just suggesting to the legislature that that would be a change that we would like to see to public meeting law.
If somebody's willing to do it with me, I can definitely commit to like, a set amount of time with someone, I just can't guarantee that I'm going to get it done.
We can do it. Donna can do it.
Is that something the council is...
I'm personally questioning it because I have a very hard time with those kind of things myself, and so if I can't choose not to participate in that, that's supplementing meetings, it's not separate standing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it would be in addition to meetings.
Yeah.
I have trouble with those, but go ahead.
Well, maybe that's something we can talk about.
Maybe we should talk about.
Well, as an item at some point?
Sure, so I guess one option is to direct city staff to do something like that. If we're going to do that, maybe we make it an agenda item for next time so we actually, we can hear Donna's concern and discuss what we're telling them to do.
And see what we think altogether as a council and go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable, Donna?
Yeah, makes me think of Google Drive. Some of the committees try to use that, but it's really not open to public access and...
Well, we'd have to, I mean, so, I'm not advocating for or against it, but we'd have to deal with the, you know, it would have to be open, but I think it probably does make more sense to have it on an agenda if it's for the council to determine that it's a legislative priority and hear from the public pro and con.
I think it's a really interesting topic. I would love to talk more about, particularly Google Drive, actually. Just putting that out there.
I think it's just also another way for people to engage in a different format because sometime, you know, sitting down and watching is challenging, catching snippets is challenging, and, you know, for some people, it's a really just convenient way, like you're at work, you have a thought, oh, there it is, it's at least saved, you can go back and look at it. It's just, it's a different market, different audience.
Okay, for some future discussion. Was there any, oh, you had a thing, yes.
I just, I wanted to get this out there because I'm going to be gone for the next couple of weeks, and whether or not we do it, but put it, I know you had a deadline on bills, which I did very begrudgingly with a little bit of time I've had left, so.
Uh-oh.
But I wanted this out there, and if you want to amend it or other people, I didn't get any comments except from Ann, and I incorporated yours.
Great, thanks.
And so it, use it or modify it, but if you'd like us to do our own self-evaluation around this, say... the same time, then there it is.
And you sent this around via email, is that right?
Well, I did. I did this revision today, right before the meeting.
Okay, so if you send me the digital version of this...
You got it.
You got it.
It's in your mailbox.
Okay, great. Very good, then. So, yeah, I'll recirculate it, I guess?
Okay, no, I sent it to everybody, so you could say, yes, let's just use it and see if it works, and if it doesn't, then...
Great, and maybe have the same deadline, you know, trying to get it done by the 31st? Does that sound reasonable to others? I mean, that's a fair bit of time, so. Okay, great, and...
Do we want to set a date for...
Well, yeah, that was actually going to be mine, my thing, unless any other council members... I mean, I don't mean to steal it. I'm sure you're probably going to say it, too.
Nope.
So, I just wanted, I wanted to remind people to make sure to fill out the evaluation. Jamie is going to compile all those results, and we need a date to talk about them, together with Bill, so if, I figured now would be a good time to find a date to do that. One hypothesis is that we could pick, you know, Wednesday that we're not meeting, for example, February 6th. I don't know if that works for people, but, no?
No, but the 20th would... Or the...
The, oh, the 20th of February?
Yeah.
How does, well, so...
That's a long ways off.
It is a long ways off, but it's not necessarily bad to hold that for us as well, because this is also a contract negotiation year, and so, I mean, one possibility is that we can do both the evaluation and the contract stuff together in one night. Another possibility is that it might just be easier to separate them, but...
Can you clarify, not the city manager's contract, the additional contracts are all...
No, the...
The city manager's contracts.
The city manager's contracts.
On the same night as the evaluation.
Right, like, we could, right, we could do the city manager's evaluation and contract together on the same night, or we can try to separate them. Bill, I'm curious for your thoughts on this. My inclination is to actually separate them, just so that...
We've done it both ways in the past.
Okay. So, but if you all have opinions on that...
I'm inclined to separate them, too.
Okay.
I'm free on the 20th.
You're free on the 20th. So let's at least book ourselves for the 20th on 6:30. Do we want to pick a different day? You said the 6th doesn't work for you.
I just, I...
Before you go, the only other constraint that I think we need to have is that we should be doing this before town meeting day.
Both of those are tentative trial dates, and sometimes...
Who knows what happens?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I will put it on my calendar. Outlook, relatively good I'll be there, but if I have to stay, I have to stay.
Okay.
If we bump it later, because it's less stuff?
I mean, I don't know. I've ended up, like, waiting until, like, 11:30 at the courthouse for a jury to come back, so it, you know...
You never know.
You just can't tell. Sometimes it's super quick, other times it's...
So is it 6:30 then, is the one we're going to have, and then you'll let us know whether it still works?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I'll have my phone usually...
Is it 6:00 then, 20?
As long as the jury's charged by, like, 4:30.
Not the 6th, just the 20th. So far, anyway. Well, we can try for another...
Is there any date before the 20th?
But...
Just in case we need something after those two, before town meeting day?
So, you're referring to two. I had...
I thought that's what Glenn and Anne said, they wanted two meetings.
No, no, I know, but we all have one day so far.
Right, that's correct. Yeah, we're trying to find the second.
I'm saying, if we want to, I'd rather have another one before the 20th, so we're not waiting too late.
So I'm just gone the 5th through the 7th. Other than that, I'm pretty open.
Okay.
What if, I mean, the 4th?
I could do the 4th.
I'm not back yet.
When are you back?
6th. I'm back the 6th.
The 7th.
And she's back the 7th.
Are you back during the day of 7th? Like, could you do an evening meeting on the 7th?
I think so, yeah.
Works for me.
Is that, everybody's shaking their heads? Yeah, 7th? Okay, well, let's, 6:30, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's tentatively plan on the 7th at 6:30, and I would like to be potentially, like, depending on how the time goes, potentially starting to talk about contract stuff then, but let's reserve the 20th if we don't get to it.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, that's it for me. Jill?
Just real quick, if any council members didn't get to sign these liquor license apps, the liquor board gets a little finicky if everybody doesn't sign them.
I don't have anything particularly exciting, although I will note, you know, we talked about the federal shutdown, and just say that has hampered our, trying to process through our loans and grants for the wastewater, water resource recovery facility, and some of those are through federal agencies, and so that has stalled. So there are effects beyond, I mean, obviously, the out of work, well, actually, they're not even out of work, the workers who are having to work and not be paid, so they can't seek another job. But there are secondary impacts to trying to get things moving, so that's happening. We received today an Act 250 recess order, which gave us the, it was the follow-up from last week's Act 250 hearing outlining everything that needs to be done. That is faster than we expected it, so that's great. Means that the due date for everything to come in is February 25, which is about the time we'd asked to recess the meeting, too, anyway, to get everything in order, so that's great. Keeps us right on track, and then a response date of March 12. So that was good news. We also, as we know, received the jurisdictional opinion yesterday about whether the full thing should be in Act 250 or just pieces. So that's good news, and we are trying to work out some details about TIF, and so that's all that. So a lot of things happening on a lot of fronts, but glad we have the budget done and the ballot set, and on to whatever comes next.
Great. So I think that's, that's everything. So, without objection, we're going to consider the meeting adjourned. Wow, record time.